All right, and I have gotten the signal. I'd like to, once again, call the August 24, 2020 Salina City Commission meeting to order. And first of all, I'd like to confirm with staff that the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been properly provided.
Yes.
Thank you. With that, we'll proceed with roll call.
Mayor Hoppick. Vice Mayor Hodges.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner France.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
With that, we'll move on to the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence. Please stand if you are able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, we will move on to awards and proclamations.
Item 3.1, "The Year of 2020 as the Nineteenth Amendment Centennial Commemoration in the City of Salina." Ann Zimmerman, Vice President, Salina League of Women Voters, will read the proclamation.
Thank you. I am Ann Zimmerman, 3904 North Ohio, Salina, and the League of Women Voters of Salina brings this proclamation. The City of Salina Nineteenth Amendment Centennial Commemoration Proclamation. Whereas the introduction, passage, and ultimate ratification of the Nineteenth Amendment, which granted women the right to vote, were the culmination of decades of work and struggle by advocates for the rights of women across the United States. And whereas Kansas was the fourth state to ratify the Nineteenth Amendment on June 16, 1919, and Tennessee was the 36th state to ratify the Nineteenth Amendment, making it the law of the land on August 26, 1920, 100 years ago this week, whereby millions of women were enfranchised. And whereas the daughters, granddaughters, and great-granddaughters of the women who fought so hard to vote have been making their voices heard at the polls for nearly 100 years. And whereas the centennial anniversary of the ratification of the Nineteenth Amendment represents a historical milestone to be lauded and celebrated while recognizing that the Nineteenth Amendment still left many citizens disenfranchised and work remains to be done. Now, therefore, be it resolved that City of Salina commemorates the 100th anniversary of the passage and ratification of the Nineteenth Amendment, providing for women's suffrage to the Constitution of the United States, reaffirms the desire of Salina citizens to continue strengthening democratic participation, and to inspire future generations to cherish and preserve the historic precedent established under the Nineteenth Amendment. Therefore, citizens of the City of Salina shall enjoy the freedom of voter participation, continue to fight for voting rights for all citizens, and celebrate this important milestone by proclaiming the calendar year 2020 to be the Nineteenth Amendment Centennial Commemoration, signed by the Vice Mayor of the City of Salina. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Zimmerman. Would you like to come forward for your copy?
Yes, thank you.
And I did forget to ask, sorry. I'm getting it all out of my system now, I hope, early in the meeting. Do you have any kind of virtual events or anything that you would like to publicize in commemoration with this?
Our largest event was last Saturday. We walked across town through nearly every low voter turnout, low registration precinct in the city of Salina, from Schilling Elementary to Thomas Park, about 25 or 30 of us and others in our -- well, this is a collaboration among the League of Women Voters, the NAACP and the Unitarian Universalist Church of Salina, and others in the group that didn't want to walk nine miles drove in their cars through the other precincts that are low voter turnout, low registration districts with signs on their cars encouraging people to register to vote. We will continue to make every effort to register the unregistered in the City of Salina through the end of the voter registration period, which ends on October 13. It's more difficult than usual because of COVID-19, but we are figuring out every possible way to get the word out and get people registered. Anything else? Anyone?
All right, so people have until October 13 to register to vote. And there's a website, isn't there, where they can check their voter registration status to see if they are currently appropriately registered?
Yes, ksvotes.org.
ksvotes.org.
Is the website to look at. I think Kaye Crawford wanted to add something related to this. Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hello, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. Good to see you all. Kaye Crawford, 845 Manchester. I just wanted to honor the memory of Marge Minton, who just recently passed away. She taught me just about everything I know about the League of Women Voters. She was very, very active, she and Ted, and most of you will remember them. She was extremely -- I think it was about the late '80s or early '90s when I first got involved with the League of Women Voters. And she worked very hard to try to make sure everything ran just perfectly. And I just wanted to bring it to the public's attention that because many people in the community will remember Marge Minton and also her work with CAPS. She did a lot of work with CAPS. And Ted did work with all the agencies, too. And I just wanted to remember her. She lived to be 97 and recently just passed away. Then I also wanted to express my concern that one of the candidates for the seat in the Kansas Legislature made disparaging remarks about the League of Women Voters recently that we're all just a bunch of Democrats. Well, Democrats and Republicans make up, and some independents make up our public. And I did not see the remarks, but it was brought to me by a very good source. And I just think it's a shame that our country is so divided. And I hate to see it come down to the community and to our state legislature. And we know they are, and we know we all are. I don't know how that's all gotten so bad, but I just wanted to say that the organization that I remember, the League of Women Voters, has always been nonpartisan. We have members from both parties, or all parties, actually. And I think, you know, it's hard to do that, of course, and even on the commission, there were things came up that I know that there were some people didn't like the way I voted. So that's just part of the process. That's what governing is all about, to me. And I just wanted to bring it to the attention that it's too bad that those kind of things happen. And I hope that person, and I won't name that person, but I hope that person thinks about that a little bit, because the League has been a very good organization. And Marge was, I don't know if she was a founding member here, probably not, but the Powells were, you remember the Powells. Anyway, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Thank you very much for the work you do.
Thank you, Mayor Emeritus, and thank you for the tribute to Mrs. Minton. I never met her, but I certainly know the name. With that, we will move on to item 3.2.
Item 3.2, "The Month of September 2020 as National Recovery Month in the City of Salina." Don Green, Senior Recovery Coach, will read the proclamation.
Thank you very much. I'm Don Green. I'm Director of Pathfinder Services at CKF Addictions, and I'd like to invite you all and join us in the celebration of National Recovery Month 2020. It will be our 31st anniversary. And here is the proclamation. Mental and substance use disorders, including co-occurring disorders, affect all communities nationwide. But with commitment and support, people with these disorders can achieve healthy lifestyles and lead rewarding lives in recovery. By seeking help, people who experience mental and substance use disorders and co-occurring disorders can embark on a new path toward improved health and overall wellness. The focus of National Recovery Month this September is to celebrate their journey with the theme "Join the Voices of Recovery: Together We Are Stronger." Recovery spreads the message that treatment is effective and people can and do recover every day. The impact of mental and substance use disorders and co-occurring disorders are apparent in our local community. An estimated 43.6 million people in the United States are affected by these conditions. Through Recovery Month, people become more aware and are able to recognize the signs of mental and substance use disorders and co-occurring disorders, and encourages people in need of treatment and recovery services to seek help. Managing the effects of these conditions helps individuals achieve healthy lifestyles, both physically and emotionally. Through Recovery Month, observance continues to work to improve the lives of those affected by mental and substance use disorders and co-occurring disorders by raising awareness of these disorders and educating communities about effective treatment and recovery services that are available. For the above reasons, I'm asking the citizens of Salina to join me in celebrating this December as National Recovery Month.
Thank you very much, Mr. Green. Do you have any events, any support services that you would like to highlight?
Yes, I'm glad you asked. Beginning September 1st, from the 1st to the 12th, we'll be having our annual Run for Recovery. It's a virtual run for recovery. If you go to our website, slide on down to the bottom, hit on the button that says Run for Recovery. It fills you completely on how you can do this. You can compete in the 5K or the Kids One Mile just by doing it. There's an app on your phone you can download, and you can join us in the race. And I believe it's a $10 registration fee. And also, on September 11, we're proud to bring back Mark Lundholm, a recovery comedian that we've had here several times. And he will be appearing on 9/11/2020 at 7:00 PM. Tickets are available at Evenbright, evenbright.com. And you can also look forward on our Facebook pages at the Pathfinder Recovery Center and at CKFAddictionsTreatment.org. And really love to have you. Mark is, well, you'll remember him.
Well, that's wonderful. I'm glad that you're able to find some things to do to keep the awareness out there. And just once again, for people who are watching, the website and the Facebook page, the website is?
CKFAddictionsTreatment.org.
CKFAddictionsTreatment.org.
And just, you know, Facebook, it's CKF Salina.
Okay, great. So people can go to those resources if they'd like to find more information.
There's even a brand-new, like he shot a little promotional video for our Facebook pages. From what I've heard from staff, they're sharing it all over.
Fantastic.
The guy's funny.
Great, thank you very much.
Hits a heck of a spin on it.
Well, and a virtual 5K is a rhyme. I can do that from the couch, I bet.
This will be the first year I've cooked about 600 hamburgers.
Great. If you'd like to come forward and get your signed proclamation.
Thank you very much for all your hard work.
Appreciate it. Thank you for your hard work. With that, we will move on to Citizens Forum. Citizens Forum is an opportunity for any citizen to address the commission on a matter that's not on today's agenda. So when you do come forward, please plan to limit your remarks to around five minutes. And please state your name and address. And just speaking for myself and listening to people with masks, if you could state your name slowly and clearly, I, for one, would really appreciate it. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to start us off at Citizens Forum?
I will go first.
Okay.
Can I remove this? Because is that all right? Or not?
I'd prefer the speakers leave them on.
Loosen it a little bit.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, my name is Reverend Dolores Williamson. I am the Salina and Hutchinson District Superintendent of the Great Plains United Methodist Conference, and I am a retired sergeant first class of the Kansas Army National Guard from 1982 to 2004. I live at 635 Georgetown Court. On August 17, 2020, I watched the City Commission meeting, the presentation of the Gold Award of Valor given to four of our Salina police officers, recognizing uncommon valor in the line of duty. I was disappointed that this award was presented last week in this manner, especially in light of the social climate of our times. Daily, I hear and read and observe the social injustices happening in our communities, nation, and around the world. I continue to learn more about the requests for a national reform to demilitarize the police and the demand to defund or reallocate funds with more public accountability and transparency of policing policies and practices. The Gold Award of Valor, which recognizes uncommon valor in the line of duty, was given in response to the August 28, 2019, killing of a man wielding a knife after he killed his step-grandmother here in Salina. I do not know all the circumstances of the situation, nor was I in the room. I understand the KBI investigated the event, and I do not know all the policing protocols. I know police officers encounter dangerous situations regularly, and citizens everywhere do expect police officers to do their job to protect and serve in the community. Yet, could they have gotten an award for something else? And what does this award do for our police officer's mental state? So I ask, what kind of mental health support are these officers getting on an ongoing basis? What is the frequency of their mental health assessments? Why wasn't a negotiator called in? Do we have a negotiator on the Salina Police Department? If not, why not? I assume the four officers did not seek this Gold Award of Valor for themselves. Will this award bolster our Salina police officer's mental state? What does uncommon valor really mean? Reviewing the categories of awards the Kansas Association of Chiefs of Police have on their 2014 and 15 application, because that was the only one I could find, my thought is maybe the officer should have received the Silver Award. A life-saving, it is an award of extraordinary action which directly contributed to the significant prolonging or actual saving of life. They did save their own lives and the other three officers who did not discharge their weapons, correct? I know the City Commissioners have no control over what awards are applied for or awarded by the Kansas Association of Chiefs of Police or any other association or organization, but timing is everything. Whose idea was it to present that award without discerning our current social times? It just seems insensitive to me to present this award at this time, as I and many constantly worry about the lives of black people in this nation who can be gunned down in a minute. Have we already forgotten the murder of George Floyd and others? If George Floyd's public murder had not been videotaped for eight minutes and 46 seconds, those officers could have been nominated an award or awarded the Gold Award of Valor by their state Chiefs of Police Association. And now we hear of another young black man this weekend, 29 years old, with three children, was shot in the back in Kenosha, Wisconsin over this weekend. What irony. I am disappointed that the City of Salina did not consider or reflect that maybe this isn't the best platform or time to present such an award. As a concerned resident of Salina and a person of deep Christian faith, I presume others have deep Christian faith or a deep faith of some type. I recommend some of the, here's a few recommendations for the future. I recommend a pre-screening or vetting of awards and doing a sensitive and in-depth consideration, looking at what's happening in our social world before presenting such awards as that. On the website of the Kansas Association of Police Chiefs, it says that the recipients will attend an annual award, a banquet award, where they are recognized and presented plaques in front of leaders of law enforcement, community, family, friends, and the news media for their heroic actions. Listen and understand, I am not saying a person, citizen, or a police officer cannot be recognized, honored, or awarded for their work. I am not saying we cannot read proclamations or proclaimate whatever needs proclaimed. I do believe in giving honor and recognition where it is due, but come on, Salina, is this meeting the right platform or the right time, and such a time as this, to present such an award? We can do better than this. We really can. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much for your observations, Pastor Williamson. And you posed some really great questions, and I hope to meet with staff and follow up with answers for the questions that you raised. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak at Citizens Forum? All right. With that, we will move on to public hearings.
Vice Mayor Hoppick, we have someone approaching.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Training still, Melissa?
Don't forget to give your name.
Dalton McDowell, South 9th Street. Thank you. Just question, or not a question, a statement. On that government settlement for the Schilling Air Base decontamination deal, when is all the, I guess it is a question. You can answer it if you want. When is that set to start? When they, because I know it was a settlement, and it went through U.S. federal court, and it was agreed on with the Department of Defense. When is that set to begin to decontaminate the old Schilling Air Base?
I'm going to defer that to the city manager, because I know that he has a much better idea about the timeline and where we are in the process.
Yes. The City Commission and the other public entities took action. The next step is that the federal government has to finalize what's called a consent decree. We all then jointly submit that to court, and a judge would sign off on that. At the point that the consent decree is finalized, then funds get transferred to us, and we can begin the process of remediation. So we're working on remediation design and preparing for bidding, but we've yet to have the federal government finalize the consent decree and submit it to the judge.
How long in the court process, once it gets to court, is that going to take with the backlog? Does anybody know?
I don't entirely know. Just the preparation, the consent decree is taking probably 30 to 60 days longer than we might have expected, and I don't know what the court's timeline might be.
So another word, stay tuned.
That's typical federal government.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak at Citizens Forum? All right, last chance. With that, we don't have any public hearings or items scheduled for a certain time, so we will move on to item number six, the Consent Agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of August 17, 2020.
Is there, oh, go ahead.
I move we approve the minutes of August 17, 2020. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of August 17, 2020. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. We'll move on to Administration, item 7.1.
Item 7.1, receive and review the 2019 audit report from Gordon CPA.
This afternoon, Mayor, our Vice Mayor and Commissioners, Debbie Pack, Director of Finance. I'm not going to speak first. I'm going to allow Sean Gordon from Gordon CPA to give his report, and then I'm going to follow up with some of the findings and what staff is doing as a result of those findings. And then we'll take questions from you, as you might see. So, Sean.
Good afternoon, everyone. As Debbie said, my name is Sean Gordon with Gordon CPA. We performed the 2019 audit of the city. So I know you've seen that audit report in your agenda packet. So I'll kind of go through section by section, point out some of the highlights of that report, and then just feel free to stop me if you have any questions along the way. So starting with pages one and two, this is the Independent Auditor's Report. Here we discuss management's responsibilities for the city's financial statements, and then our responsibilities for the financial statements. And our largest responsibility is to issue an opinion on the city's financial statements for the calendar year 2019. So page two, you'll see an opinion paragraph, and we issued an unmodified opinion, which is the highest and cleanest opinion we're allowed to give the city under kind of national guidelines. Flipping forward to pages four through 15, this is the Management's Discussion and Analysis Section. This provides a narrative explanation of the city's financial statements through the eyes of management. So quite a bit of information is discussed here. Quite a bit of good information is discussed here. And then the basic financial statements of the city, those are on pages 16 through 17. You'll see what's commonly referred to as the balance sheet and the income statement. And those both include activity of the city's two component units, which are the Salina Airport Authority and the Housing Authority as well. And then pages 18 through 30 are the city's major funds and the city's enterprise funds, which are the utility funds. These are funds of the city that have much more activity running through them, so they're presented a little bit separately from the more minor funds. Pages 31 through 70 are the notes to the financial statements. There's quite a bit of information discussed here as well, including information on the city's accounting policies, long-term debt and capital asset information, CAPER's retirement program, and many other items there. This section is mostly the same as last year. There are no major changes required by our standards boards for 2019. And then pages 71 through 106, these are the additional funds that I talked about, the smaller funds of the city that have a little bit less activity running through them. And then the final kind of section of the bound copy of the audit report is pages 107 to 124. This is called the Statistical Section, and it's a 10-year view of the historical information about the city's finances, operations, constituency, and economy. So like I said, a 10-year view of all of that information. And then presented separately were three audit recommendations that we made. And so we'll check up on those audit recommendations when we do the audit for 2020 here in about nine months. If you have any questions, please let me know.
If I might, Mr. Gordon, I do have one for you, maybe.
Yes, sir.
And that's in the notes on page 38. It talks about budgetary information, and it says, "Kansas statutes require operating budgets for our enterprise funds." And on the very next page, it says, "A legal operating budget is not required for the same enterprise funds." And that seems to me like that's a disconnect in language.
Yes.
And looking at the history, that language changed with the 2012 audit. When that was inserted, prior to that, it referenced the reserve funds for those operating funds. Is there any explanation as to why there's that apparent conflict?
That may have just been carried forward. I'm not sure why that got inserted and why it's been carried forward, but it's something that we'll look at for the next audit.
Because it is confusing.
Yes, I agree with that.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
I presumed it was standard audit language, but, you know.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Ryan? Any questions?
Nothing for me.
Commissioner Davis? I think the only question that I had is not necessarily for the auditor. I conveyed it to Mr. Schreger earlier today. There's, you know, I'm not an expert on how to read financial statements or whatever, and I just wanted to know if there was any sense of our total amount of debt or where I can find that within the report, something that encompasses both our outstanding revenue bonds, temporary notes, as well as the various funds that we've borrowed money from, like the KDHE water fund, et cetera, et cetera. I'm just trying to get a handle on our total debt load.
There is on page 44, starting on page 44, there's a note called Long-Term Debt.
Right.
And it should encompass all of that debt, those debt issuances that you referred to.
Okay.
It does go on for a few pages.
Right.
The revolving loans from KDHE start on page 48.
Right. And I guess my question was not just what's outstanding, like for this, you know, that's associated with this particular fiscal year, but a running total of everything that's out there in the future. It's, I mean, because I was just adding up various numbers, and I kept coming up with different things, and I didn't know if you could give me a ballpark on what that number is.
So I just see Long-Term Debt outstanding at 1231, 2019 would be.
And you're on page?
Probably on the bottom of page 44. It's 116 million there in the third column, and then plus 42 million for the business funds.
Okay, so 116 plus the 42 million?
Plus 42, that's correct.
Okay. All right. Well, that's, I'm glad I was close, because I had 118, and then, I mean, with adding up everything individually, so.
Okay.
And then the, okay.
As a little bit of clarification, it looks like that number includes OPEB liabilities for CAPERS, and it's a philosophical accounting conversation about whether that represents debt as you might be thinking of in terms of a loan. So that number includes some accounting liabilities in addition to loans. So that number includes some accounting liabilities in addition to loans.
And if we were to remove the CAPER's responsibilities, I'm just trying to get a handle on debt that's been issued and long-term loans that have been applied for.
So page one hundred and eighteen of the statistical section will show outstanding debt by type.
Okay.
So there would be information there as well. And that would not include any of the OPEB or CAPER's liabilities, so that would just be the bonds, any loans or capital leases, and then temporary notes as well.
Okay, so basically, that's looking like, is that one hundred and thirty, one hundred and thirty-nine million?
Is that your total?
Yeah.
Hundred and, one hundred and thirty-nine million, that's correct.
Great, I appreciate the tutorial, thank you.
The only note I would make on that number is that it does include the new money, new market tax credits in that number, so when you're trying to get to just general obligation bonds or just revenue bonds, the numbers are, there's numbers all over the place. But if you take out the twelve million, six hundred and forty thousand dollars of new market tax credits, that's included in that one hundred and thirty-nine million, I think you'll get to a more realistic number of where we are. The other question I know you mentioned was how much of that is special assessments? We are tracking that, and we have separated that out. I think at the end of twelve, 2019, that number was about six point six million dollars of that total.
Thank you very much, I really appreciate it. Anything else from Commissioners? I guess I will, thank you very much, both of you. Is there any comment or questions from the public? Wow, maybe we will get through this quick. With that, I will bring it back to the Commission for any further comments or questions.
Vice Mayor, move we receive the 2019 audit report from Gordon CPA.
We have a motion and a second to receive and approve the 2019 audit report from Gordon CPA. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, I'm sorry. Any opposed? Motion passes four zero.
And I will add, we have submitted this to the state as we're statutorily required. I know that was an issue that came up on an older audit, and this will, has not been put into the website yet because we wanted you to receive it first, so this will go onto the city's website this week.
Great, thank you very much, Ms. Pack. All right, moving on to item 7.2.
Item 7.2, Resolution 20-7869, authorizing the mayor to execute an amended agreement with the Salina Athletic Partners, including Salina Baseball Enterprises, Inc., Unified School District Number 305, and Kansas Wesleyan University, relating to Dean Evans Stadium.
Mayor and Commissioners, I'll try to keep this brief and then be happy to answer any questions you might have. But as you may recall, on the twenty-seventh of July, you authorized the city entering into the agreement that's referenced with the different partners for the Dean Evans stadium project. That agreement included a provision that in return for a half a million dollar contribution, the school district would be a party to a separate facility use agreement with a term of thirty years. When it came time for the school district to take action as one of the partners in the agreement, they recognized that statutorily they're precluded from entering into agreements that exceed ten years. And so they followed up with a request that the agreement be amended with the languish that's shown in the blue sheet, essentially turning a thirty-year term into three, a ten-year term and two additional ten-year renewable terms. So it still extends to them the benefit of the thirty years, really doesn't change the substance of the agreement financially or otherwise, but it gets them in compliance with the applicable statute that's unique to the school district and their operations. So the agreement that you have before you in the resolution makes that one change as requested by the school district. You could certainly, there's no fiscal impact, and you could approve it as presented, you could amend it as you might deem appropriate, depending on what that amendment might be that may or may not work for the school district. You could postpone consideration and provide us direction on additional information you'd like. You could vote to deny the resolution, which might very well put us at impasse trying to resolve the school's legal obligations. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
Just one, at the renewal period, is that just an automatic renewal without any negotiation?
Yes, there wouldn't be any need for additional renegotiation.
Commissioner France, did you have, have a question? Commissioner Ryan? I'm good too. Is there any public comment, public questions? Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the Commission for action.
I move we approve Resolution Number 207869, and the amended agreement is presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 207869. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. All right, item 7.3.
Item 7.3, Resolution Number 20-7854, authorizing the mayor to execute a management agreement with Spectra XP to end the current operating agreement to manage the Tony's Pizza Event Center and replace it with an operating agreement to manage the facility for an additional ten years through February 28, 2030.
Mr. Cotton?
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor Hodges and members of the Commission. This afternoon, we are here to discuss extending the partnership with Spectra XP to continue managing the operations of the Tony's Pizza Event Center through 2030. Spectra has improved cost recovery from a fifty percent average under city supervision to a seventy-two percent average, and has decreased sponsorship growth by seven hundred and fifty-five percent since beginning management operations in 2012. The proposed contract is very similar to the previous contract approved in 2017. Spectra will continue with the general management of the facility, including event programming, food and beverage services, entering into contracts for events, pursuing naming rights and sponsorship opportunities, and reviewing fee structure to find possible revenue gains. Annual compensation fees for Spectra's services will remain the same as the current contract at one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars per year. Consistent with prior agreements, the proposed 2020 management agreement allows for a portion of Spectra's compensation to be incentive-based. Due to changes in the IRS tax code, Spectra would have the ability to move from one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year to one hundred and forty-four thousand dollars per year in incentive pay based on performance in food and beverage, sales, event sales, and gross revenue, conference and convention attendance, and facility care, maintenance, and participant satisfaction. Spectra has worked hard to lower the general fund subsidy over the past several years. The average general fund subsidy needed when the facility is run by the city was four hundred and seventy-two thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one dollars per year. The general fund subsidy has reduced to a budget of two hundred and sixty thousand dollars per year under the Spectra staff. In the 2019 operating year, only two hundred thousand of the two hundred and sixty thousand budgeted general fund dollars were needed to offset the operations of the facility. Additionally, Spectra was and continues to be very proactive in regards to their COVID-19 response in terms of staffing, safety precautions, and rebooking of events. Staff has an excellent working relationship with Spectra, with the Spectra management team, and is confident in their ability to continue operating at the facility in a positive manner for the city of Salina. Spectra is prepared to invest five hundred thousand dollars into facility improvements to improve the guest experience, which will continue to make the facility competitive in today's economy. Keller Taylor and Susan Trafton are present to answer any questions the Commission may have. They will also discuss the business and marketing plans. At this time, staff recommends approving Resolution 20-7854.
Do any Commissioners have questions specifically for Mr. Cotton before Mr. Taylor and Ms. Trafton present?
Mr. Cotton, on page two of the blue sheet, there's a table that shows revenue expense deficit, cost recovery. Does that expense portion? What I want to ask, does that include everything, including the incentive fee that we pay them in the following year?
I believe so.
Okay, because that can be a fairly significant amount.
Yes, sir.
Okay. The other question I have, and I don't know if it's for you or someone else, but how long was the Tony's sponsorship for?
I believe it was ten years.
Ten years? Okay.
Oh, sorry, fifteen.
Fifteen years, okay.
Anything else for Mr. Cotton?
I have a few, I didn't know if Commissioner France was...
Commissioner France, do you have?
I'm through at this point.
Okay. Sort of general question, they don't necessarily need to be answered at this second. You may want to wait for the other team to answer, but just thoughts. From the city's perspective, is there any, oh, service or benefit that we would expect to get with a ten-year agreement that we would not get with, let's say, a five-year agreement as far as services plan? And the reason I ask, the, oh, what's the proper term? But the cost recovery seems to have leveled off at seventy-one percent. And if that's truly as good as it gets for this type of facility in this tight market, then we can actually budget whatever that deficit's going to be for a long time. If it's real, if our hope is that it's going to go higher, that is some degree of, not leverage, but it's, it's an incentive to work harder or to be compensated more if that number is raised.
I think part of the answer to that question is their willingness to invest five hundred thousand dollars back into the facility. That shows that they're committed to being here and to continue to make things better for the community. I've studied several facilities like this. Seventy-one, seventy-two, seventy-three percent cost recovery is pretty good. I've seen other facilities that run in the forty percent of cost recovery. We do have challenges competing with Wichita and Kansas City. Spectra works as hard as they can to minimize the loss to the city, so I'm not sure if that answers your question. But I don't know, they may be able to speak better to what other things they can bring to town, but as far as these numbers go, I think they're doing exceptionally good job.
And I might add, we've had ongoing conversations about the target operating margin in general, as well as as we negotiated this contract. And I don't think we have an expectation that there's large gains to be had to lessen that. Spectra did point out, and you may recall from the study session presentation that they made, they do feel like we're at a competitive disadvantage with our catering, and so their interest in the use of the five hundred thousand dollars is on table settings and serving utensils and equipment to, and an upgrade of the space to aesthetically, to hopefully generate a little bit more in that regard. But I don't think we have an expectation that there's going to be a large additional reduction over that margin.
So that would be our reasonable expectation. I mean, it really doesn't look like it's budged at all, and if that's... Oh, I don't want to use a math term, asymptote. If that's as good as we should expect, then it just makes it easy to plan.
Yeah, I think we'll continue to look for opportunities, and we'll continue to look at their performance. But we felt like we were pushing them as we negotiated the agreement and the target operating margin, and had hit a point that was aggressive or at least held them to a good level of accountability.
Okay. That's all for now.
Thank you.
All right. I see we have a couple of representatives from Spectra. Would either one of you like to address the Commission?
Sure, I can start off, and, you know, first and foremost, Keller Taylor from Spectra. You guys remember me from early March, and couldn't be prouder to be standing here today with really true partners at the end of the day. Susan and the team have done a phenomenal job, along with city staff, in really taking Tony's Pizza Event Center to the next level. And I think as you look at our management over the last, you know, several years, as Commissioner Davis indicated, you know, we've been in that six hundred thousand dollar range, and we think with our investment of five hundred thousand dollars today, we can take not only that food service element to the next level, which will, you know, on average, we're dropping probably forty-five-ish percent of food revenue to the bottom line, so it's pretty impactful on a dollar-for-dollar basis. But at the same time, we think that with the reinvestment in the hall, we're going to be able to compete with not only spaces locally, enhance already existing events in the space, but also bring new events to town, working with our partners to visit Salina. So we're very excited to be here, appreciate your consideration. I'll let Susan talk for just a second, and then we'd be happy to stand for any questions. But thank you so much again.
Sure, welcome. I guess, thank you again for having us. I know when we were here in March, we talked a little bit more in depth about some competitive environments. And at that time, I did reference both the Manhattan Hilton as one of our main competitors. When you compare the two dining experiences and the overall aesthetics of the facility versus ours, we definitely are at a disadvantage. So that's where we feel like we can use those investments that Spectra's willing to make, roughly one hundred and sixty thousand dollars specifically in the food and beverage area, and then additional funds with upgrades to the restrooms, the conventions hall, and very importantly, the AV tech that we have. A lot of our AV tech equipment has actually not been updated in over ten years in the upstairs meeting facilities. So as our partners around this day, who are competing for the same pieces of business, are making those adjustments, we need to do that as well. Just up the road, too, formerly Kansas Expo Center, now Stormont Vale Event Center, is undergoing a huge remodel right now. So just those two kind of give you an insight of some of those competitors. And we do feel we can win either back some business that we have lost or actually replace and gain new business with these additions and investments they're willing to make.
Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Trafton or Mr. Taylor?
What, if I might ask, what kind of specifics are you thinking about in terms of your improvements to the catering and dining experience?
Yeah, we can go back and forth.
Yeah, okay. Commissioner, we appreciate that question. We're really excited. When you look at Spectra's normal model, and you may remember that March presentation, we kind of showed the current place settings with the typical place settings. And so at that one hundred and sixty thousand dollars that Susan mentioned, we'd be able to acquire a thousand place settings of that, what we, what's our standard setup, basically? So new flatware, stemware, buffetware, chafing dishes, the whole, you know, really the whole experience elevates. We're going to look at things like linens and the whole experience being elevated. And if funds allow, as the contract stipulates, hopefully, a little bit lower on the priority list, we may even look at tables as well. So I think that whole experience changes. It elevates to what the expectation of, you know, really the, what the hall will look like and what Susan and the team, and we'll work cohesively with the city on envisioning what that looks like. But it'll be a very cohesive, great experience for everyone coming in.
Well, I just want to say that for me, this conversation is kind of deja vu because I remember having a conversation with one of the prior directors before Spectra, and the argument at that time was that our dining facilities were very dated and very antiquated, needed to be updated. Of course, there were other things about the building that also required attention, and so I think we addressed that first, but what you're saying resonates. It's not just you guys.
We've been talking about plates for ten years. So it is a little bit deja vu. But it does, it has to do with overall dining experience, what pricing that we can gain, you know, and look at that as an area of growth for us, so we identify that.
I think our chairs are over thirty years old when we replaced them. It's time to move on to the plates.
It was.
What does the timeline look like for acquisition of the new materials and kind of implementation of the new focus on food and beverage and convention business?
Well, you know, kind of two separate questions, I'll take one at a time. So on the equipment side, you know, our VP of procurement in Philadelphia, we have lots of relationships nationally that we're going to leverage for your benefit at the end of the day. So we'll work with city staff on crafting an RIP exactly for our scope, and then get it to our, you know, our providers, as well as anyone else that may want to openly bid. We anticipate probably our national deals will, you know, come to fruition at the end of the day. I would think by the holiday season, it's reasonable to expect that we'd have all that equipment in and ready to use, which would be a good time to kind of showcase what we can really do. You know, I'll let Susan kind of talk to the longer-term business lead time, but, you know, usually that, especially in the COVID era right now, with a lot of things shifting that we're in 2020 to 21 or 22, for example, groups are a couple of years out right now, so it may be a little longer sales cycle than normal. But we expect to, A, take care of the groups we have right now at a really high level, and then hopefully expand that into new business later.
Yeah, and I'm fully confident that we would be able to execute the whole project by the end of next year. I've got some placeholders in place, if you will, for timelines for different projects as we complete. You know, obviously, the sooner we can start some of the smaller projects, like... You know, obviously, the sooner we can start some of the smaller projects, like Keller mentioned, we can order the food and beverage equipment right up front, and then work with our current timeline to renovate the upstairs meeting space, and then probably Great Plains Manufacturing Convention Hall would be the last piece of that, as far as when we talk about the paint and the flooring, just because we're already booked into, well, and looking at late next summer or early fall to complete that portion of the project.
And first of all, thank you for the $500,000 investment, it's a really large investment, and I appreciate Spectra making that contribution very much. Does that carry through to any of the Heritage Hall improvements that we're looking at making?
Yes, so I kind of touched on it a little bit before, about $160,000 of that is gonna be F&amp;B equipment. Oh gosh, 40 to 60 is upstairs for the meeting spaces up there, new paint, new carpet, new AV, and then the remainder would be within the hall itself, and then the downstairs restrooms. I don't know if you remember, the upstairs ones were actually remodeled in 2016, when our last remodel, but the downstairs ones were not at that time, and aesthetically, those need to be brought up to par with the ones upstairs and throughout the other renovations that have done throughout the building, so we have a cohesive convention space.
Commissioners, you may recall that the Great Plains Hall sponsorship included some provisions about the improvements that we're talking about. So Spectra's willingness to invest $500,000 and leveraged another sponsorship worth $500,000, so you put those two together, and that's $1 million benefit to our bottom line.
And that Great Plains deal was for 10, so that might have been the 10 that stuck in your head earlier, the Tony's is 15, so.
It's hard understanding sometimes what sticks and what doesn't. Following up on Commissioner Francis' earlier question, do the total expenses, as we see them presented in the blue sheet, that does represent the totality of expenses? Your fee, the operating subsidy, any incentives? I mean, these are accurate numbers that we're seeing there as the true expense of running the facility?
That's my understanding, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Great.
If I might follow up on that with another one, and it's probably, I asked about the length of time on the Tony's, and it worked out to about $80,000 per year. But if you look at the cost recovery and the deficit, you don't see much change with that change in the income. Of course, income's 1.4 million, 1.5 million, so 80,000 is, you know, 5% maybe, and I just wondered if we might expect that to start showing, or is it just a function of how the market is those years?
Well, I think there were a couple things, Commissioner, happening in a few of those years, as far as content goes, specifically in the market. One of those years, we did have a big loss on an event that had a pretty dramatic impact as well. I think what the investment's going to allow us to do is to focus in on business that drops a lot of money to the net, right? So we're focusing on food and beverage business, we're focusing on enhancing the hall, taking great care of those things, but then also being extremely aggressive, but strategic at the same time on bookings and content in the main arena space. So when you look at the book of business, Susan and the team, Visas Salina, and everyone really in the community supports great youth, high school-level activities that not only has an impact on the facility, but then on the entire community with hotel rooms and spending in town. So those will be our bread and butter events, we'll do a great job, continue a good job on food and beverage-focused events, and then add in concerts, family shows, all those typical things that you've seen year-over-year from us in the past as well. So we expect, and we're gonna be held accountable through our target operating margins, to continue to drive that net bottom number down as far as we can, really, at the end of the day.
Are you finished, Commissioner Francis?
Yes.
Okay.
For real this time.
Okay, well, all right. I just had one last question remaining, and I know it's kind of difficult to answer because we're in the midst of the year, and we're still in the midst of our COVID response, but do you have any sense how much our operating subsidy is going to change for this year since, obviously, I mean, a lot of your revenue streams are just, you know, they may be postponed and have a banner year in 2021, but what does 2020 look like for Spectra and for the city of Salina?
Sure, I think, I tried to address that as best as I could in the business plan that I submitted. Right now, we're looking at about a loss of about 80 total events. We previously budgeted for about a 577 loss. Right now, with the adjustments that I've made in the revised budget, I'm sitting at a loss of 605. We're seeing that evolve probably weekly. I will say, in all of that, there is some glimmer of hope, we are seeing some new business come to our market. Now, while they don't carry the large net revenue like a food and beverage event, because we're really, our hands are tied in a lot of those situations, we are seeing some additional revenue in, like, weekly meeting space, and then also, like you kind of mentioned, a lot of our events that have, not many have canceled, we've had several canceled, but a lot have went ahead and moved to 2021 and 2022, which is a great problem to have, unless you're trying to do a remodel project next summer in June and July. But we'll figure it out. You know, there's also other good prospects out there for us. We do know that girls wrestling is coming back, that was a first-year piece of business for us last year that was non-budgeted, so we're excited that we get to host that once again this year, and that was very profitable for the city as far as hotel revenue and tax revenue coming back. So we, honestly, it's a moving target. Every month, we adjust and accommodate the best we can and make changes as we can to control losses.
Gotcha, thank you very much.
I can address kind of the longer-term content picture with agents and promoters, too. I mean, we're, you know, our corporate VP of Booking is constantly in contact with folks, looking at multiple opportunities. We've talked to Chris and other staff multiple times about driving concepts, you may have seen those, and we've been very ahead of the curve in staying in touch with those producers, and, you know, it's finding the right opportunities at the end of the day that make fiscal sense for the venue and for the city at the end of the day. When you look at the touring market, they're pretty paused right now, right? So they're kind of seeing what's gonna happen, they don't want to reschedule three times again, like many of them have done, they went from spring to fall, fall to 2021 now, so you see many of the major artists, promoters, family show producers, many are being affected by furloughs, layoffs. So I think we're going to see that content likely bounce back sometime starting in 2021, depending on what gathering restrictions are. I think you're gonna see more content start to happen when people can make full national routes, right? They're not gonna do pockets, they're not gonna do states, they're not just gonna do, you know, South Dakota, North Dakota, and the Upper Midwest. It's got to make sense financially for them and their artists, and you see a lot of artists proactively making the decision just to wait till 2022 at this point, if they don't really have to work. So we're staying in constant contact with them, we're gonna take advantage of any opportunity we can that makes sense, but I'm optimistic. Hopefully, you know, things continue to progress slowly but surely, and we'll have opportunities when they're meant to be. Until then, we're gonna get, hopefully, a bunch of food service equipment and do a great job with that, and start planning the renovation with the city staff.
Great, thank you. Thank you both very much for being here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any public comments? All right, I'll bring it back to the commission for further discussion or action.
And Vice Mayor, move approval of Resolution Number 20-7854.
We have a motion to approve Resolution Number 20-7854. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes for zero. Thank you very much, appreciate it, and look forward to doing business with you for the next 10 years. All right, we'll move on to Item 7.4.
Item 7.4, award of contract for the transmission water main for the South Water Treatment Plant, Project Number 20021.
Ms. Tasker?
Thank you, Vice Mayor and Commissioners, Martha Tasker, Director of Utility. And as we've talked in the past, Salina receives about 60% of its raw water supply from the Smoky Hill River and the remaining 40% from the downtown wells. Due to drought conditions over the past two decades, the City Commission approved and implemented a raw water supply study, which evaluated the city's existing water supply sources and their ability to meet the water supply needs, including during drought conditions through the year 2060. The raw water supply study included the South Well Field and Water Treatment Plant, improvement projects, that includes a 3.5 million gallon-a-day water treatment plant, four existing wells, and piping from the wells to the treatment plant, and a sanitary sewer line from the treatment plant back to the existing wastewater collection system, all of which is scheduled for startup in January of 2021, with substantial completion in February of 2021, and final completion in May of 2021, so getting closer to the end of that project. And the award of the contract for the transmission water main from the new water treatment plant to the existing water distribution system is necessary to allow startup at this new water treatment plant. It also provides a water supply for future growth areas along Progress Drive. This water transmission main includes about 7,000 linear feet of 20-inch piping. There was a map attached, the line leaves the water treatment plant southeast corner of Ohio and Waterwell Road, runs west along Waterwell Road to Progress Drive, and then north along Progress Drive to Schilling Road, where it ties into our existing water distribution system. Six bids were received. The low bid was from Greeley Excavating LLC from Greeley, Kansas, in the amount of $912,982. The high bid was for $1,146,097.44. Roughly, there's about $230,000 difference between the low and the high bid of the other four bids, two were under $1 million, two were over $1 million. And Greeley Excavation LLC has not completed a project for the city of Salina to date, so as a result of that, HDR Engineering Incorporated, who is our design consultant for the project, and city staff completed a detailed review of Greeley Excavation LLC's experience and their competency to construct this project. I contacted Greeley Excavation and asked for a list of projects they've done in the last five years that were comparable in size and complexity, asked about their bonding capabilities, and then also about their company profile, their org chart, how many employees, and who does what. So we received that information, and they listed four projects that were similar. One was in Emporia, one was in Topeka, Ottawa, and Lion County Rural Water District. HDR contacted the design engineers and owners for each of those projects and received favorable reviews with respect to their construction quality, budget, and schedule. I contacted peers that I have in southeast Kansas, and also received favorable comments about their company. Was a little concerned because they didn't have a large, flashy website, so had to dig a little deeper to get the information on them. So in case you tried to look them up on a website, you probably didn't have a lot of luck, nor did we, but in detailed information, we found a lot of good things about them from their bonding company, insurance company, and such, so everyone that's worked with them has been pleased with them. The construction schedule is to be complete in January 12th of 2021, and final completion in February 11th, 2021. As you'll notice, the schedule matches very closely with the water treatment plant schedule, so that's all working out well. A budget allocation of $690,000 for this project was included in the 2020 capital improvement project under system enhancements. HDR provided a draft engineering estimate prior to our first scheduled bid letting, which was July 30th, and the estimate was well above our budget allocation. So as a result of that, we postponed the bid letting for two weeks, and evaluated the costs, and discussed the funding availability with the finance director. And city staff, when we developed our estimate, we used, I'll say, concept drawings, we're going from this location up to that point, and estimated the project costs at $690,000 in early 2019. When HDR did their cost estimate, they prepared it based on a set of plans and what they saw for the market in Kansas City. As a result of that, HDR and city staff reviewed the unit costs from previous line-area projects, talked to some contractors about what some items cost, got a feel for the labor required, and then adjusted the unit cost to develop the engineer's estimate that was on the total project of $1 million, lost my place, $1,084,890. So looking at the budget allocation in comparison to the low bid, there were really three things that made that the majority of the cost difference. The first was two road boars that were required by Saline County at the crossings of Waterwell Road. Those were not budgeted for, and what they are is we have a 36-inch diameter sleeve that's bored in place, and then the 20-inch water main is inserted inside of that to avoid any damage to Waterwell Road, and also an 18-inch sleeve for the 6-inch water supply to the Rural Water District. So those two things add about a little $102,000, based on the bidder's estimate, and the other is the cost of pipe. Well, just to be honest, we don't install 20-inch pipe very often, so evidently, we're, the previous engineer that retired, and myself, are not the best at estimating 20-inch pipe in today's market, because that's where we found another difference. And based on our budget number, we used about $90 a foot, and the contractor used $105. And we have some crossings of ditches and under some gas lines and fiber that require restrained joint pipe, that was about $24 a foot more, so if you take those two items, it adds up to about $200,000. And putting that on top of our budget, I feel like the bids that we got from the contractors are good bids and reasonable. We had three bids that were between the $900,000 and the $1 million, so confident that that's what the project costs in today's market. So staff is proposing the addition of a 7% construction contingency to be approved to cover construction change orders for minor changes that occur during construction, and those change orders are approved by the Director of Utilities and the City Manager. But any change order that would be over the 7% or would include a scope change in the project, we'd bring back to the City Commission for approval. With the addition of the 7% contingency, the authorized amount would be $977,000. The authorized amount will be funded from the system enhancements, which we have a $2 million annual budget for that. In 2020, we have $794,000 that hasn't been allocated. $690 is currently in the budget, and then $287 will be funded from the available $794,000 that's not allocated. Staff has identified three options for the city commission's consideration. Item number one is award the contract for the transmission main for the South Water Treatment Plant Project Number 20021 to Greeley Excavate LLC of Greeley, Kansas, in the amount of $912,980, with an additional $64,018 of construction contingency, resulting in a total project amount of $977,000. Item two is postpone consideration of the contract to a specified date and time, and provide staff further direction, or option three is to vote to deny the contract and provide staff further direction. Staff recommends option one. This time, I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Commissioner Davis? Commissioner Ryan?
I just want to make sure that I understood your statement correctly, because it didn't match the way I read the blue sheet, and that is, we have $2 million of budget in system enhancements. Of that amount, $794,000 has not been allocated to a project.
That's correct.
But of the balance that has been allocated to projects, $690 is set aside for this.
Correct.
So the $794 is available for the overreach.
Yes.
Okay. I understood that $794 is what was left and that the entire, you know, $912,000 or $977 would be a $200,000 overrun of our budget authority.
Well, I agree with—
So thank you for that, for saying it the way you said it.
I agree with your reading. When I reread it myself, I came to the same conclusion you did, so I thought I should flush it out a little further for you.
Yeah, it makes me feel a lot better.
Yeah, I had the same question in terms of, out of that $794,000 that's available, we're taking the $287 or whatever the amount was that you referenced from that, and then that portion of systems enhancements would then be reduced to around whatever, $400,000 or whatever my math is.
Some other project.
Yes.
Did we, do we have any other projects that aren't going to get, I mean, we didn't have this allocated at all, or did we have some things that we had lined up for this year that are now going to need to be postponed?
We deferred a few projects that we had on our list, but they were not anything that was critical to this year's operation or we would have maintained them on. So we'll be bringing some of them back next year into the projects. But this is obviously an important project because without the transmission main, the water treatment plant can't start up and move water. So it's critical in our operation, so we did have the available dollars there. And sorry for not writing that clear enough, but as I read it, I confused myself. So I know what Debbie and I talked about, and we were on the same page. I was just poor with my wording.
Thanks for the clarification, Commissioner Davis? No? Okay. Is there anyone here from the public who would like to comment? All right, hearing none. I'll bring it back to the commission for further discussion or action.
Vice Mayor, I move we award the contract for transmission water main for the South Water Treatment Plant Project Number 20021 to Greeley Excavating LLC of Greeley, Kansas, in the amount of $912,982 with a $64,018 or 7% construction contingency resulting in a total project authorization of $977,000.
Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to award the contract for the transmission water main for the South Water Treatment Plant Project Number 20021. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 4-0. Item 7.5.
Item 7.5, Citizens Forum at City Commission Study Sessions.
Vice Mayor, Commissioners Jacob Wood, Deputy City Manager. I'll just give you a brief introduction here to this topic. Last week, the City Commission asked that we add this to the agenda for this week. Basically, the discussion we had last week was about the 3:45 Citizen Forum that takes place during part of the study sessions. City Commission at that time kind of discussed the reasons we used to do that and why we might want to change our idea about that. In the past, that had been kind of an informal, unrecorded, unbroadcasted opportunity for people to speak to the commission, but now those meetings are recorded, and they're also broadcast live. So the discussion last week was about whether that was really something that was necessary or not. So you guys, the options that you have are to discontinue the Citizen Forum that takes place at 3:45 as part of the City Commission Study Session. You can postpone consideration and provide staff with some additional direction if you want some more information, or you could do nothing, which would effectively just keep the standard practice that we have right now. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, although I don't know if I have any real answers. So.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. We're addressing this because Mayor Hoppick had brought it up under Other Business last week, and I certainly agreed, since we have had some, since we have had some meetings where we didn't have a study session preceding the meeting, but we still had the Citizens Forum, and we haven't had citizens generally wanting to participate at that time. And so I guess I would look to my fellow commissioners for their input as to the utility of having a Citizens Forum. The way I think about it is specifically when we do not have a preceding study session.
That's my feeling is if you have a no study session, I really don't think there's any reason to have that standalone study session. I don't have any problem with it during the recorded study session, presuming that someday we're going to get back in the room there, and people may feel more comfortable to address us in that setting rather than the big room. But for us to make a special trip or earlier trip over for that seems redundant to me.
Commissioner France?
My feeling.
As I took the proposal, it was, the suggestion was, and of course, we don't have to follow the suggestion, I guess, but was that we would not have a general study session except at the regular meeting, at the opening of the regular meeting. If we do have, I'm sorry, a Citizens Forum, except at the beginning of the regular meeting, whether we have a study session or not. If we do have a study session, obviously, we'll give people a chance to comment on specific topics relating to that study session, but in terms of a general Citizens Forum, that would be limited to the early part of the regular meeting. Is that consistent?
You said that so much better than what it came out of my mouth. That's exactly what—I think.
And yeah, that's consistent with mine. I mean, I think that it exists in that setting for people to address the items in that, in that setting.
I just wanted to make sure that's what we were actually talking about.
But I think that the major reason for eliminating the redundancy is that the, what has been our traditional 3:45 non-televized access to commissioners is now televised anyway.
Yes.
So in that regard, it becomes somewhat redundant. I mean, if the reason for coming to see us at 3:45 was to avoid being on television, the cameras and the podium can be intimidating. We've eliminated that comfort zone, as it is anyway, so we may as well have just one session.
Yeah, and I've noticed from time to time, people are uncertain if they want to stand up and address us at the 3:45 or the 4 o'clock session. It might have had people stand up and sit back down. So I think this would, you know, eliminate some confusion while still keeping that venue open for public input.
So if we were going to go ahead and, in the case where no study session is on the schedule, we wanted to eliminate the standalone Citizens Forum, but also, as Commissioner France said much more eloquently than I did, we wanted to maintain the public comment portion for study sessions, for people to ask questions or give their input on the subject under discussion at the study session. What would be the best way to do that?
I think if you go ahead and, when we refer to a Citizens Forum, that's almost as if it's a standalone item. So if you vote to discontinue the Citizens Forum, I think that's communicating that you're going to discontinue that 3:45 set aside. Much like a regular agenda item, as you conduct an item of business, you can pause and take public comment, you know, on that topic so you wouldn't be precluded from, as you're conducting a study session and, you know, you are wrapping it up, or if you want to do it at some other point in the study session, you wouldn't be precluded from going ahead and taking public comment like you do any other agenda item. So I think if you vote to discontinue the Citizens Forum that takes place at 3:45, that's communicating to us and to yourselves, we're not going to, we will no longer have a dedicated public forum for all topics, and then you're not precluded from taking public comment on the study session topic at hand.
So we would just be on the chair of the study session to remember to allow time for citizen questions, and very often, they're in, well, at least in that smaller room, they're informal enough, a person could almost raise their hand if it was a major question.
Sometimes that's what occurs, depending on the topic and the format and how the chair wishes to conduct it. But I guess I view it, each agenda item that's on today's agenda does not have a sub item for public comment, per se. You just, that's part of your normal protocol.
So I don't know if we would want to go to the extent of designating the last 10 minutes of the study session as time for citizens to ask questions. I mean, or, and if there aren't any, we can keep discussing, but it at least does make sure that we won't forget an opportunity for citizens to ask questions. Sometimes their questions are the ones that we forget to ask.
Right, and sometimes the citizens are a lot more knowledgeable on a particular subject than I am, and it's very insightful. And I was just thinking, if we did make that recommendation to affirm our commitment to public comment during study, you know, during and at the end of study sessions, I just don't want it to then, you know, morph into, you know, the public doesn't have that opportunity. And I don't know if it's necessary to communicate that in the form of a motion or as part of the motion or not.
With this just being a motion, not a resolution, not an ordinance, and trying to remember whatever it is you word as a motion today for posterity, my recommendation would be that you keep your, you don't tie your hands by being overly specific. You recognize that you have that intent, you have that option, and you, we can certainly draft study session agendas on the part of staff to call that out, but if you dedicate it as 10 minutes and then it needs to be 15, do we need to come back and make an amendment? Or if it's not at the end, for whatever reason, we choose to do it somewhere else in the study session, technically, you've tied yourself up on a motion that we may not even be able to find back on the record.
You know, I think that if we try to designate a time, you know, study sessions are supposed to be a little bit informal, and I think designating a time for public comment kind of runs counter to that. I think if somebody in the room wants to raise their hand and say, hey, what about this, you know, based on the mayor's discretion, you know, they, it should be a little less formal than this setting here. So I would support just discontinuing the Citizens Forum at 3:45 and maybe directing the staff to change the wording on the study session agenda a little bit to make it clear that, you know, public comment, public participation would be welcome as a part of the discussion.
Would it be helpful if there was something in the statement that said at the chair's discretion, he will receive, he or she will receive questions during the forum?
I think so, and yeah, I like that.
I really think it didn't flow.
Yeah.
If you make everybody wait till the last 10 minutes.
On this, do we need to take action on this to officially discontinue it? Or is that just a practice?
I think our advice last week was that you didn't, but it was your preference that we formalized it.
Okay. Do we have any, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. I was just going to make a motion, but if you're going to ask for—
I was going to ask for public comment.
Public comment, let's do that.
If there's anyone who has strong feelings about maintaining the 3:45 Citizens Forum.
I'm just now tuning into everything here in Salina, so forgive me for not knowing what the 3:45 was, but as long as you have an opportunity for residents or citizens to have questions or, you know, discern whatever you're studying and give our input, I think that would be fine. But I think people need to know, communication's going to be key, because I don't know how many know about the 3:45, if I'm just now learning about it, and I've lived here for six years. So just making sure that people know that it is no longer at 3:45, it is actually a part of the study. Does that make sense?
Yes, yeah, absolutely it does. Absolutely it does.
That's all I have.
Thank you. All right.
All right, I would move that we dis—
I'm sorry. I don't think it'll affect your motion, but is the idea that the study sessions will end at 3:45 and there'll be a 15-minute break between that and the 4 o'clock meeting? Or that the study session will go until 3:55?
Yeah, I think the intention would be that it would continue to 3:55, and the chair would have the discretion to field or allow for public comment as appropriate, given the topic. I mean, one example is there may be a presentation and a natural pause where you want public feedback before you continue. Another may be the presentation, you know, logically runs toward to the end, and you take all the comments at the end. The chairperson would have that latitude, but the expectation would be that, there wouldn't be a termination point at 3:45. It could go up to four.
So we're basically lengthening the study session officially by 10 more minutes.
A lot of times, we're there anyway, and we're wedging in public comment, or we end up fielding comments about the study session topic, so on a—
It just has to end in time, a reasonable break to reconvene here.
Correct.
It's not a limit, because you can start 15 minutes earlier, of course. True.
All right, I'm sorry, Commissioner France?
I move that we discontinue the Citizens Forum that takes place at 3:45 as part of the City Commission Study Session, condition that we will continue to allow citizen participation in the study sessions on the topics that are germane to that, and that we continue the practice of Citizens Forum on any topic at the beginning of our regular meeting, as we have in the past.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to discontinue the Citizens Forum as it exists, taking place at 3:45 as part of the City Commission Study Session, and I will ask the clerk to refer to the video for Commissioner France's additional comments, which I support wholeheartedly. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 4-0. Thank you. Moving on to item 7.6.
Item 7.6, Resolution of Advisibility Updates. Item 7.6A, Resolution Number 20-7866, repealing and replacing Resolution Number 20-7864, removing references to Project Gemini and replacing them with Great Plains Manufacturing, and determining the advisability of the City of Salina, Kansas, to issue its industrial revenue bonds in one or more series in the approximate principal amount of $20 million.
So we're going to start out with item 7.6A, or is this something where I noticed one of the—
Yeah, I think I can give one overarching staff report for both.
Okay, so do we want to have 7.6B read into the record then at this time as well?
If you want to go ahead, that'd be fine.
Thank you.
Item 7.6B, Resolution Number 20-7867, repealing and replacing Resolution Number 20-7865, removing references to Project Rise and replacing them with SCF Global Supply Chain, Inc., and determining the advisability of the City of Salina, Kansas, to issue its industrial revenue bonds in one or more series in the approximate principal amount of $600 million.
All right, Mr. Scrape.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. I think the titles for those resolutions, while they were long, do a pretty good job of explaining this action item. As you may recall, on August 6th, you passed the two referenced resolutions. Both of them were resolutions of advisability as related to what we were referring to at the time as Project Gemini and Project Rise. And then subsequently, in the following week, public announcements were made. Those were both considered trade secrets, and public announcements were made by both companies and disclosed that Project Gemini was the Great Plains Manufacturing Project and Project Rise was the FC Global Shwans Project. So the resolutions before you today don't change anything procedurally or otherwise other than striking the project code names and replacing them with the actual corporate names. The one thing that I would tell you is these are truly just resolutions of advisability. There are additional steps that will be coming back to you as action items. We'll need to finalize the resolutions and ordinances and publish a public notice of a public hearing, conduct those public hearings, and be back to you for formal action. So the action we took on Thursday, August 6th, was to indicate your receptivity to the concept such that they had some level of confidence of making their announcement, but there's more procedure to be followed to make it official. There's no fiscal impact associated with either one of these action items, and you could approve each of the resolutions that have been provided. You can approve them with amendments, or you can— with amendments, or you could postpone consideration, or you could choose not to take action on them, or vote to deny them, which would ultimately leave the original resolutions in effect, using the project code names rather than specifically citing each company. So if you're looking to make a motion, calling out the resolution titles, they're spelled out in detail in the item heading at the beginning of the blue sheet, and I'm repeating myself, but the net effect of all of this is to strike the project code names and insert the corporate names.
Thank you. Any questions from the Commission? Any input from the public? All right, I'll bring it back to the Commission for discussion and/or action.
Vice Mayor, I move we approve Resolutions Number 207866 and 207867. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolutions Number 20-7866 and 20-7867. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 4-0. Which takes us into Item 7.7.
Item 7.7, Board Appointments, Resolutions. 7.7A, Resolution Number 20-7868, appointing members to the Accessibility Advisory Board, Animal Control Advisory and Appeals Board, Arts and Humanities Commission, Building Advisory Board, Business Improvement District Number One Advisory Board, Business Improvement District Design Review Board, Community Art and Design Advisory Committee, Convention and Tourism Committee, Disciplinary Advisory Board, Heritage Commission, Human Relations Commission, Library Board, and Planning Commission. Item 7.7B, Resolution Number 20-7870, appointing members to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, these items will be handled separately, won't they?
Yes, they will. We'll start with Item 7.7A, with the bulk of the appointments. We'll deal with that one first. Any questions for staff? Any public comment? All right, we'll bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Madam Vice Mayor, move approval of Resolution Number 20-7868.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 20-7868. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 4-0.
Vice Mayor, as to 7.7B, I will be recusing myself.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. And thanks to staff for breaking these out separately, and I just wanted to apologize to Mr. Skreg, Ms. Pack, because there was some confusion on my part this morning about an appointment that, when I actually went back and looked at the minutes, it occurred in February with my mother-in-law, so.
Part for the course. It's not a problem.
You know what, COVID has made it a long year, so at any rate, I don't know if you want to address the relationship on this, or if we're-
Sure. Well, what I can tell you is, here recently, we've kind of recognized the need, we do these global resolutions, appointing members to a number of boards and committees, but we've had conversations previously about different relationships that individual commissioners may have, and so if we identify a possible relationship that could cause a conflict, then we'll try to divide out the resolutions to allow a commissioner to act on all the other appointments that they may not have a conflict. So Commissioner Ryan specifically requested that we separate these two items, so he could recuse himself from the Board of Zoning Appeals appointment, and that's why we have two resolutions rather than one.
And just for the record, Commissioner Ryan's stepdaughter, Madison Miles, is one of the potential appointments to the Board of Zoning Appeals. And an issue that we had talked about, the last time we had a Board of Zoning Appeals appointment, Mayor Hoppick's son, Austin, I believe, had applied for position there too, and ultimately withdrew his name from consideration. The Board of Zoning Appeals has its own specific role to play in the judicial process.
It does, it has a lot of autonomy or independence, but the conversation we had when this last came up is, there is the chance, and it actually happened once in Salina, where the, I should back up. A decision of the Board of Zoning Appeals is only appealable to court, it's not appealable to you as the governing body. And there is one exception, where there might be an interrelationship between the City Commission and the BZA, and that is if you, as the City Commission, chose to take issue with a BZA decision and appeal that to court. So the conversation we had the last time was, that in and of itself does not create a conflict for the purposes of appointing a BZA member. If anything, it would create a conflict if the City Commission were going to take up the question of appealing the BZA's determination, but out of an abundance of caution, in the first instance, I think Austin Hoppick chose to withdraw his application, and I think out of an abundance of caution, Commissioner Ryan's chosen to recuse himself.
Thank you.
So at the time, there was quite a bit of conversation about if it became necessary for multiple commissioners to recuse themselves, what that does to a quorum of the governing body, and the opinion that was provided at the time was that the recusals don't count as either a yea vote, a nay vote, or account towards attendance, the remainder would be the number that you use to calculate a quorum, and then the number you use to calculate a majority vote. So if a recusal became necessary, it wouldn't be procedurally problematic for you as the governing body.
Thank you.
Did Commissioner Ryan refrain from giving a casting of vote for either applicant? Or do you know?
When you say casting of vote, giving feedback to the mayor?
Well, feedback, yeah, I shouldn't say that.
Yeah, I do not know one way or the other on that.
I don't, I don't remember. I mean, when Ms. Miles was initially-
I think what Commissioner Davis is talking about is, you each, as elected officials, provide the mayor feedback as he's preparing the recommendations for the appointment, and I think your question is whether he gave any input on that, and I do not know.
Okay. Fair enough.
Any comments from the public? Pastor Williamson, you're our only, you're our, no, you don't feel obligated, I just, since we're down to the last few here, I just wanted, you're our only member of the public, you don't need to comment.
I don't have enough information.
That's fine.
But I'd love to make a comment.
All right, well then, I will bring it back to the Commission for Action, or further discussion, just, because I just wanted to say one thing. Speaking for myself, I was very grateful to my mother for withdrawing her name from consideration from the Animal Advisory Board, because I have concerns about collectively are having family members on advisory boards. That being said, my mother-in-law does serve on the CAD Committee, Community Art and Design, and I did recuse myself from that vote back in February. So I don't know if that's something that we want to grapple with today, or if we just want to go ahead and take action on this item.
I would suggest we go ahead and take action and move approval of Resolution Number 20-7870, appointing members. Okay, thank you.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 20-7870. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Commissioners, if I may, there's one additional point of clarification that Mr. Banksen pointed out to me. I didn't word it as clearly as I could have, but the BZA does not serve in an advisory capacity to you as the governing body. That is a key distinction with that particular body compared to many others.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Motion passed 3-0, and could somebody recall Commissioner Ryan to the room? Thank you, Commissioner Ryan, and welcome back. We don't have any development business. Is there anything a Commissioner would like to bring up under Other Business?
Just one that I, and I'd mention it to the City Manager, at some point this summer or fall, we are to give him the equivalent of a mid-year performance evaluation, for lack of a better term, just something we need to schedule sometime soon, as our attention got diverted this summer, obviously, but we can put it on the radar for-
Yeah, actually, I think the intention is for you to communicate what I will be evaluated based on in the upcoming evaluation at year-end, so.
Length of PowerPoint, I think, would be a good one, that would work in your favor.
I'm assuming less is more.
Thank you. So I'll communicate that to Mayor Hoppick, because you're right, we need to not just let that get lost in all of the COVID response that we have.
In particular, since it was your first full year, we had done it mid-year, just to, hey, this is what we've noticed, so that when we actually do submit, you know, requests for the official review at the end of the year, any concerns would not have gone 10 months without being made known.
That was actually my request, that we communicate ahead of time what I might be evaluated on, so I can try to meet your expectations.
We will set those expectations very, very high for you.
Just to ensure, whatever it would have been, it didn't include what you've been through this year already.
That wasn't expected on my part, either.
The only thing that I would like to add is, I would like to thank the Police Department for offering us, we had a tour of their facility today, and their new training facility, and hopefully, there will be another public opportunity in October, when they have their grand opening for citizens to come and take a look for themselves, and, but I think that one of the things that really appealed to me from that new facility is using the virtual training to help officers determine what appropriate responses are, because as Pastor Williamson mentioned, it all boils, that's a lot of what it boils down to, is, you know, appropriate response, and having that training so ingrained that you don't even have to think about it. So I'm grateful that we have a tool that can help us in that fashion, so I just wanted to thank the chief for the tour. Is there anything else? In that case, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
We adjourn.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned.